Living in the farmland where we do, our community is sustained in many ways by the success of our farmers. So Lord bless them as you've blessed us. I thank you, Lord, for all those who serve this city. I pray, Lord, for the administrators, council persons, all those who lead departments and do the work that keeps us moving forward day by day as your people. I'm equally thankful, Lord, for those on the streets by day and night in public safety, our police officers and firefighters, who allow us, Lord, the peace of sleeping at night comfortably and knowing that our community is protected in every way. We lift up, Lord, our schools as they begin to have graduations and as the school year comes to a close, many, many outdoor activities will follow through the summer. Help us all, Lord, to keep our children safe, especially those involved in outdoor sports and activities. We pray for our nation tonight and those who protect and defend our Constitution and for those deployed, Lord, overseas, serving this nation and our interests. We thank you for your grace and for your comfort and strength for our city family. I want to pray especially for Mrs. Rick Clu and any other in our family here at the City of Fulton that needs encouraged, that needs touched, that needs comforted in any way to your glory in Christ Jesus. Bless this session tonight and all those that have come from the community, and may your will be done in any decisions that are made. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Praise the Lord.
Okay, next we have a proclamation, and I'm very proud to read.
The proclamation of recognition and appreciation, whereas, on the occasion of the retirement of Fire Captain Steven, Steve Sessler, for his noteworthy career with the City of Fulton and committed devotion to both residents in times of distress. And whereas Steve began his career as a volunteer with the Fulton Fire Department in March of 1999 and transitioned to the full-time firefighter on August 8th of 2008, following the retirement of his father, fire engineer Leon Sessler, who I was fortunate to work with both of you, where he was promoted to fire engineer in 2011 and then to fire captain in April of 2020, a post he held until his retirement. And whereas Steve has received numerous certifications proving his show's competence in his subject, or particular recognition for his work committed to the tiniest of citizens as a child car seat safety technician. And whereas as a firefighter, he has engaged in one of the most hazardous occupations in the United States, and at any time during any emergency, he could be called upon to sacrifice his life in the performance of his duties. Now therefore, I, Steve Myers, Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere and grateful appreciation to Steve Sessler. We would like to extend congratulations and best wishes to Steve, Kim, and their family in their new chapter of life. Thank you for your service.
I also have a plaque to give you, Steve, that we come up with here. It's City of Fulton Fire Department, Fire Captain Steven, retired Fire Captain Steven L. Sessler, served from August 8th, 2008 to April 16th, 2023. Just want to thank you for your brave and selfless sacrifices that you have made for our community, and also I'd like to thank your family for allowing you to do that.
Thanks, sir.
I also have a certificate from the Missouri State Fire Marshal, Tim Bean. It's a certificate of appreciation, Captain Steve Sessler, Fulton Fire Department, and appreciation of over 15 years of service to your community and the citizens of the great state of Missouri. We owe you a debt of gratitude. The loyalty and commitment you have demonstrated throughout your career simplifies the best of Missouri's fire service. Your dedication is appreciated and respected by all. Tim Bean, Missouri State Fire Marshal. We also have a card for you and a little gift, retirement gift.
Thanks, sir.
I think, of course, EMS or fire, police always has a spot in my heart and always will have. So thank you. Next, we'll have comments from visitors. If we have anyone that wants to address the council, please step forward and give your name and address, and you'll have approximately three minutes to speak. Seeing no one come forward, we will proceed to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to pull off of there?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Very good. This consent agenda has been, motion made in second. Do we have any discussion on any of that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. We have no unfinished business tonight. We'll move directly on to new business, which under 10 item A is a consideration by councils to officially excuse Councilman Rick Clu from council meetings for health-related reasons through August the 1st. I would imagine all of you know what the situation is with the mayor, and so I'd like a motion for that, please.
Make a motion to approve the excusal of Councilwoman Rick Clu from the council until August the 1st.
Very good.
Just to share, I've been sharing messages back and forth with Councilwoman Rick Clu, and her recovery is progressing. It's progressing along the timeframe that they are expecting, if not just a little bit faster than what they were expecting. So she's doing very well, and she wanted me to send her best to all of you.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. We'll move right into council concerns. Councilman Henshaw is not here tonight. Councilman Seibacher?
I have nothing to report for the park board and no concerns.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go back to the previous item and amend my motion to approve the excusal with compensation for Councilwoman Rick Clu.
Sure. Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. Does anybody have any questions on the amendment? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, now we'll vote on the motion with the amendment attached. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. She is still being very active, even from where, as much as she can.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Seibacher, did you say you had anything or didn't?
I do not, thank you.
Councilman Stone?
The Historic Preservation Commission meets next week, so I'll have a report out at the next city council meeting. And just as a reminder, the month of May is Historic Preservation Month, and the city, the commission, in partnership with the Historic Society, is offering yard signs to any property that's 50 years or older, whether it be residential or commercial. And if you're interested in having one of those yard signs, there's many already out and about, but we've still got a lot of month left if you want to recognize your property. And again, the only requirement is for it to be 50 years or older. Other than that, I don't have any additional concerns to bring forth to the council.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Airport Advisory Board did meet. Since our last council meeting, unfortunately, I was unable to attend due to supporting work. And I see that Kyle is not here for any updates as well, and I have no additional concerns at this time.
Councilman Combs is out tonight. Councilman Washington?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utility Board has not met since our last council meeting. I wanted to see if, since Kyle is not here, Daryl, is it possible to get an update on the bridge? It looks like it's going as planned. Are we on track with that project? I don't know if that, if you can give us an update on that. I've had several people asking. I've been telling them the 90 days, just as we were told originally, and like I said, it looks like things are wrapping up and going as planned down there, but that's only from a distance.
I can give you an update from a utility standpoint. Daryl Dunlap Utilities, I think today we should have finished. We had some few pieces of conduit to get out of the way for some sidewalk, but the conduits and everything for the gas, electric, and water through the bridge has been completed. So as far as I know, it's pretty much on schedule unless Ms. Tyler has something.
Per our staff meeting, it is on schedule to be completed on time. As Mr. Dunlap gave the utilities portion, our city engineer said that pretty much everything was going well. There were a couple of bumps, but he did not anticipate it delaying the completion of the project. So we are on time.
Well, I am super excited about that. I can't wait for it to be finished, and so I will continue to tell everybody around mid to end of June. And I do not have any concerns.
Very well, thank you. I just kind of have an update maybe on what you're feeling here tonight, the heat, and I can tell you it's worse on the other side by... The contractor is on schedule. There was a little communication breakdown, I think, originally, but we got that straightened out, I think. But we have some cooling, what are they, misters, they're called misters, I think, on the other side, and they do help, but because I, at least I think it does. Of course, it was cooler today, too, so... But we are on track to have our air conditioning back in working order by probably Friday, maybe Thursday, depends, but hopefully by Friday unless we run into another problem. And it really wasn't any of anybody's fault, I don't think. It was supposed to be in in February, which we wouldn't be having this discussion. And as the way everything goes nowadays, it takes forever to get it. So it took longer to get it than they could, than Greg could, Teal could get it. When they got it two weeks ago, they started working on it, and so it is a two-week project for them. This is the second week. So hopefully we'll have it by Friday, and we did, I think, cancel last Friday's City Hall being open. We're probably not going to do that again. That'll be up to Renee. But it is better over there. It's not good, but it's better. Want to address some of that?
I would like to. So with respects to City Hall, we have formed a better contingency plan. And as far as utility billing, because we were closed down, if we have to do something like that again, we will send our utility billing personnel to the police department. There is a window, there's bulletproof glass, people can walk in, because as you all are aware, that staff handles cash. So we need to make sure that they are safe as well. So Chief Flatwick was kind enough to say we can use that facility. And there is a possibility that we might look at, if we have to relocate, relocating downstairs. Just so council knows, part of the problem for us with relocation is the majority of the people in City Hall utilize desktops. So I'm throwing it out there so that you all know, we will be, including in our capital improvement, the ability to switch to laptops or tablets. That way, we have that flexibility without having to wire things, without, you know... And the other thing is, this was a great exercise in showing us what we need to do in the event that we have to evacuate City Hall. So we're on top of it. We do not expect to have to shut down operations. We can source out our engineering folks. We can make some better movement, but last Friday was horrible, and we did shut down. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. Councilwoman Seibacher, will you read Resolution 3491, please?
Yes, Mr. ... Resolution number 3491, Amendment of Natural Gas Sales Agreement. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an amendment to the natural gas all requirements sales agreement with the Interstate Municipal Gas Agency for the purchase of natural gas at six cents per decotherm and establishing an effective date. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3491 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
We've had a motion in the second for Resolution 3491. Daryl, you want to come up and explain? I think this has not been an increase since '08 or quite a while.
Yes, this is a group that we actually belong to. It's not a private firm. It's made up of cities in Missouri, Iowa, Illinois. And it did go through the executive board of that association, which Fulton has a seat on. It also went through the annual conference, and it got unanimous approval from both of those. And then the utility board did vote on that at their last meeting, and it was unanimous at the utility board. They have not had an increase, and the major reason for the increase was pay raises, but a lot of it was everything that they have to buy or contract with as far as computer services and things of that nature. So I did look back, and our pro-liance contract that was previous to this one was four and a half cents, and that was signed when Mayor Craighead was mayor. So we have been with this group for a long time. They've been better than the private firms we had before that we started in '06, because you call Heather or Gina at IMGA and ask them to give us a price, get us booked, they do that. Where, and when we was dealing with the private firms, we sent a fax to a trading floor somewhere, and somebody on the trading floor picked it up and filled it. And usually if we said we want to book gas no higher than $4, that's the price it always came back at was, $4. Where Gina and Heather's, they're usually lower. So that's where we're at. It's been a good group to work with. Two of your utility board members went to the annual meeting. Some of you all have been to it before, but that's where we're at, and it's been approved by the U-Board. Any questions?
Thank you, Daryl.
Okay. Oh, one other thing. Used to, we had Tony Ferris, which was in our gas department, and about half his time was set doing the daily bookings of gas nominations. IMGA does that for us now, so they're saving you about a half a full-time employee and have been since we went with them.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 3491? Say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? No? Okay, very good. Now we'll have the presentation of Resolution 3492. Councilman Stone, will you read this for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3492, Lead Service Line Replacement Funding Grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to make application and sign all necessary documents from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources' State Revolving Fund Program for loans under the Missouri Clean Water Law, Chapter 640, RSMO. I make a motion to pass Resolution 3492 at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. Do we have any discussion on this? Basically applying for a grant?
Mr. Mayor, see, we have an application deadline of May 31st. Are we going to be able to meet that deadline?
Yes, I think we will.
Mr. Luther, they are already working on it. So this is just asking for council's permission to submit it. So we have almost completed the application.
That's kind of one of two reasons why we're here tonight.
And can I have someone to clarify? It's wanting to sign all documents concerning a grant, but then later on in the title of the resolution, it talks about loans under this program. Can you clarify whether this is a grant or a loan, or how is the funding done?
It's my understanding that we're going for the grant, not the loan.
That's correct. We're going for the grant portion. So it is structured through the state of Missouri to be for both grants and loans, but the city is only pursuing a grant at this time.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on Resolution 3492. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very good, passed. And yes, we will get that grant done in time. Good question, though. All right, probably the second reason why we're sweating some here tonight is Resolution number 3493. And Councilman Luther, would you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3493, Authorization for Fire Truck Purchase. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an agreement with Banner Fire Equipment to build an E1 rescue pumper to meet the specific needs for the City of Fulton Fire Department. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3493 at this council meeting.
Motion's been made in second. Chief, you want to come up and explain something? I know you and our director both probably have some comments on this.
Kevin Kofelt, Fire Chief. Yes, we're looking to update our fleet. Right now, our fleet's average is about, going on 15 years average. So we're trying to get rid of some of our reserves. Some of them, we can't get parts for. They've been out of business for over 10 years, having trouble finding parts. Our calls have increased, pretty much doubled over the last couple of years. We're running around 2,000 calls a year now. We're running more out into county on gravel roads, and the current trucks, front trucks that we're responding in, they're not really made to run that many calls. They're not holding up very well. We're trying to get those two trucks put back in reserve status and get rid of the two reserves that we have now.
If you all will notice, as Chief said, we are working on strengthening our front line. The way this is structured, there are 780 to 840 days out from the time we sign the contract. At the point of signing the contract, we are placing the order. We do not have to place any money down. However, we have allocated $500,000 from ARPA funds. As indicated in the document, we are also asking that council will approve capital improvement allocations for 2024 and 2025. At that point, we are expecting to receive the truck, I guess, mid or late 2025. What you have before you also allows us to save $63,000 on the purchase, because we will pay 90% at the point that the truck is delivered to, I think it's Illinois?
Yes.
And then at the point we pick up the truck, it will probably be another 30 to 45 days, we will owe the balance. So we have looked at the structure, and we are sure that we can do this. We just need council support in helping to make it happen.
I have a question, and this is probably more for you, Renee. In the notes, towards the bottom there in the last paragraph you mentioned, in the event the county can support, should that be cannot support? Because I'm wondering if we haven't heard on the ARPA, what happens if that doesn't come through? Because I want to make sure they get their apparatus, but if we don't have the funding approval from them...
What's outlined does not include county assistance.
Okay, so we're good either way?
We're good.
Perfect.
I mean, we have spoken to the county ARPA committee. They haven't said no.
Okay.
They haven't said anything. They're in a holding pattern. That is why we structured something that we can do. Can we absolutely, yes, appreciate the assistance, because we are making more calls out in the county?
Absolutely.
And, you know, and I have stated, and I'll state it here, we will continue to give that level of excellence and be, and often, the first responders, but if they can't, we can still do this.
Perfect, that's all I needed.
Ms. Tyler and Madam Clerk, I noticed a typo in the body of the resolution under Section 2. Talks about 2024 capital budget, and again, in 2023, I believe that should be 2025. I want to make sure that's corrected before we pass this resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Stone. We will get that corrected. Thank you, Councilman Stone. We will get that corrected.
As, as most of you on the council now remember, probably when that sales tax passed, that is, was the original structure of it, to use it, or save it over a number of years, two or three, to buy a truck every two or three years. Am I incorrect with them saying that?
Uh, yes, that was for, the use tax was for the capital improvements. But we, we have a lot of other equipment also that we need to purchase with that, so. Just, I, I don't, yep.
So, um, I think we're, we're planning for that, and I think we can, from what I saw and what the director has shared with me on that, why I think she's spot on. We can pay for it. And that we, there's still a possibility of the county. The county just hasn't allocated any of their money yet, so we, we may get some out of that yet.
As far as the build of the, uh, the apparatus, apparatus, I mean, is this, I'm looking at the specs here on the quote sheet, 1,500 gallon per minute, single-stage pump, 780 gallon poly tank. Is this, was everybody involved in building this truck? Is this what you need?
Uh, yes, I put together a truck committee, and they did a lot of study with the city that we're in, and, uh, they spec'd the truck to fit the needs of this city.
Excellent, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on Resolution 3493. All in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinances. First is, um, Bill Number 1678. Councilman Combs is not here tonight. Councilwoman Nelson, will you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1678, Callaway County Tax Collection Agreement, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collections of taxes, with the contract period commencing up, approval through June 2027. I make a motion that we place Bill Number 1678 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very well. Uh, the motion has been made in second on Bill 1678. Uh, that's just an ordinary cost of doing business. Nothing's changed on that contract. So, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Bill 1678? Please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Like sign? Bill passes. We'll move on to Bill 1679, um, which is, it's Bell's bill. We'll call it that. Uh, Councilman Hinchey's not here tonight. Uh, Councilman Stone, would you read that for us?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1679, renaming of East 13th Street to Ovid Bell Street. An ordinance renaming East 13th Street to Ovid Bell Street and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to move Bill Number 1679 for second reading at our next scheduled council meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Very well. Um, the Bell family has requested this. Mrs. Bell, you want to come up and...
I'm Mary Bell from 506 State Road Z, representing the family, because my brother, the lazy dog, is at the baseball game tonight. So, I am here. He has been talking about this since 2012. I moved back here a year ago and said it's going to happen. If it's going to happen, I'm going to take care of it. So, the doc, documentation that you all have in your packets, I put together. And like I said, he's at the baseball game. If you have any questions, uh, there are no homes or businesses that front 13th Street, so no addresses would have to be changed. And it makes sense to do it Ovid Bell rather than Ovid Bell Press.
I agree, thank you.
Any questions from anybody?
Yes, you said there was no, no, there's no homes on that, no homes at all?
No homes or businesses front 13th Street from Bluff to Circle Drive.
So, in case of emergency and the 911, so there's nothing of, of that concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, the west side of Bluff Street will remain East 13th Street from Bluff to, I guess that would be, what, Grand?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any homes or businesses that front East 13th Street between Bluff and Grand. Would it be more simple to, to rename the entire stretch of East 13th Street?
I'm not sure there's not one house there.
There is, yes, there is one property.
Okay, I, I couldn't recall.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions, shall we vote on, um, Bill 1678, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Bill passes. Now we'll move to Bill, um, if I turn the page, Bill 1677. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1677, The Accepting of Donations, Gifts, and Sponsorships. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Finances, Purchasing, and Bid Procedures of the City, the Fulton City Code, by adding Section 2-371 through 2-375, the accepting of donations, gifts, and sponsorships, and establishing an effective date. Make a motion that we place Bill Number 1677 for, for third and final reading at the next council meeting.
Motion's been made in second. Do we have discussion on this? I think we discussed this already, probably to some point. And this is primarily, um, so we can get donations for our trip to Denver.
That is correct. Um, so that we can collect monies for all American cities. But there are other things throughout the year that happen. And so, this basically places us in a position where if there are fundraising drives, or the city is being supportive of something, that we can, we have a mechanism to use to, to collect money.
I think we've probably done this a little bit from time to time in the city. This just really cleans it up and, um, makes it more clear for everyone, I think. Any other discussion?
I, I don't wish to, to change the motion of the councilwoman if we don't have to, but is there a timing issue on having this ordinance changed? I understood that the, kind of the deadline is June the 1st. Are there any concerns? If, if this is not passed until the next council meeting, are we hampering any of our fundraising activities or our accounting activities?
Thank you, Councilman Stone. We, we aren't. We actually have been receiving funds, and they're going into the general fund, but earmarked for this. Um, our next council meeting is next week, so we should be okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on Bill Number 1677. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our next council meeting, as the director just said, is May 23rd.
Mr. Mayor, we need to read that for final passage if we're going to pass it tonight.
Next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We're going to pass, we'll pass it next Tuesday. Our next council meeting is next Tuesday at 6:30. Um, we do not have a reason for an executive session tonight. We well may have one next week, I'm not sure, at this point. That being said, do I hear in adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I have a community announcement, if I may. The Kiwanis Club is having a fundraiser this Friday. It's their annual bingo fundraiser. It is one of the major fundraisers for Kiwanis Club, and all proceeds from that go to scholarships and go to other activities for the youth of Callaway County and Fulton. Nothing stays within the club. It's all respent directly to the children of Fulton and Callaway County. And I highly recommend anybody to come out and be a part of that and support that fundraising.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.